3 Curtis Boulevard in Eastlake. It is now seven o'clock. Mr. Chernello, will you call the roll?
Mr. Murhart?
Here.
Mr. Roskis?
Here.
Mrs. New Year?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Beal?
Here.
We have a forum.
I'd like to have anyone say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we prepare to listen to one another and we conduct this month's board meeting, I would like to ask all of you for some help. We've witnessed board meetings in nearby communities where people are disrespectful, rude, and often there are displays of anger. First, I ask that we not emulate those displays that we have seen in these meetings. It does not set a good example for the next generation of adults that we are here to serve, and it's not productive. Next, I would like to ask that each person in the room this evening remember that everyone is entitled to their own opinion. It is not our job, nor the job of anyone in the room, to judge. If you are here tonight, you are here because you care, and we respect that. Finally, I would like to ask to be kind to one another and be respectful of each other. The first item on the agenda is the superintendent question and answer.
I'm sorry. So, first of all, thank you all for coming this evening, and I just want to answer some questions that we have received, first of all, at our last board meeting. There were six community members, and they all had questions or comments regarding mask policy, COVID-19, and masking of students on buses. So first, I'd like to clarify just a few of those items. Parents are legally permitted to request an exemption for their child, and we have worked with our attorneys to ensure that we are processing all those exemptions legally and properly. Willoughby Eastlake does not have the flexibility to exempt a child from wearing a bus -- wearing a mask on a school bus, as this is a federal order. If your child has been identified as a close contact to a person with COVID-19, according to the CDC guidelines, Lake County and the Ohio Health Department, they are permitted to come to school if they are fully vaccinated. If they choose to attend school after being exposed, mask exemptions are not in effect, then they must wear a mask and choose to attend school after being exposed. Mask exemptions are not in effect, and they must wear a mask when indoors for the next 14 days. And again, this is not per the Willoughby Eastlake School Board; rather, this is per the CDC, the Lake County Board of Health, and the Ohio Board of Health. And our goal is to keep our students in school to the longest amount of time and as safely as we possibly can. And I want to put that in a little bit of perspective for you. So how does -- what we're experiencing now, how does that compare to last year? So, as you know, we have a COVID dashboard, and we're required by statute to track those students and staff that have been -- have contracted COVID. Currently, we have 36 current active students. We have 114 students that have been exposed but -- and contracted the virus but are back now and healthy, and we have a total of 150 cases total. So how does that compare to where we were last year? So last year, before we hit the number 150, we hit December 9th of last year. To give you a perspective of how quickly the virus is moving through students, the Delta variant, so it is not impacting our staff like it did last year, primarily because the majority of our staff are vaccinated. So our staff are not getting caught up in the quarantines. It's mostly quarantines that knock staff out previously and is knocking -- is not knocking staff out now because of the protocols. And there were some questions about those protocols. So what are the recommendations? Just so you can hear them again. If a student has been in close contact with someone who tests positive for COVID-19, they should remain in quarantine for a minimum of 10 days with an option to extend the quarantine to 14 days. It can be reduced to seven days if on day five, a student is -- takes a PCR test, and then two days later, they can return on day seven on a quarantine, if obviously if that test is negative. Then there was some question about what this -- what the Lake County General Health had put out, whether do you have to quarantine, not quarantine? So there was a lot of confusion, and I want to read what they said. If a student is exposed for over 15 minutes while masked and at least three feet distanced with a person who tests positive for COVID-19, they are not considered to be a close contact and would be recommended for the exposed student to wear a mask while they attend school every day. The student should also be monitored for any symptoms and should stay home if they show any signs of illness, which of course, we hope people would do that. If a student is exposed for over 15 minutes but is over six feet away from the person who tests positive for COVID-19, then they are not considered to be a close contact. So it really depends on masked or unmasked, vaccinated or unvaccinated, and distance from the student. So you can imagine how difficult that is to contact trace across our schools, and that's an incredible challenge. We're doing the best that we can do. Again, our major goal is to keep our schools open for as long as we possibly can. And I understand that probably a lot of folks in here right now are not happy with a mask mandate, and I understand that. I'm not here to say masks work or masks don't work. I'm not here to make that argument. But all I ask is that you put yourself in my shoes or put yourself in the shoes of the school board with our numbers rising exponentially faster than they did last year. The last tool in the toolbox is a mask. If it -- if the numbers don't slow, you're already starting to see schools close. That could inevitably be our fate. And I know that regardless of where you sit on this issue, whether you're pro-mask or anti-mask or pro-vaccines or anti-vaccines, I know one thing we all have in common. Everybody wants the schools to stay open, and everybody wants their kids in person. We all recognize that that is the best educational programming that we can provide our students. We'll do that to the very extent we possibly can, but imagine how difficult that is to balance that. Now, I'm not a doctor. I'm not an epidemiologist. I -- you know, you can find articles that say anything you want to find and support either side, and I understand that. But at this point, I have to follow -- the school board has to follow what the CDC, the Ohio Department of Health, and the Lake General Health District provide for us. Those are our subject matter experts. And there's not -- I would suggest to you or submit to you that if we were to deviate from following those professionals, the epidemiologists, the doctors, we would subject this school district to lawsuits and everything else that would follow. So again, we're not -- I'm not here to argue that masks work or they don't work. I just know it's the last tool I have in the toolbox to deploy. And if it doesn't work and we don't slow the transmission down, eventually, it's going to knock us out. And that's what I want to avoid if at all possible. The impacts are significant. As you all know, you've all experienced them. The impacts of childcare, the impacts of younger students. They're not going to effectively learn online, or most of them won't. Our older students, that's a challenge for them, even though they have maybe the patience to do so, but it puts them in a very difficult spot, and it puts our teachers in a very difficult spot. So we're -- all I can tell you is the decisions that I am recommending to the board, the decisions that we're making administratively, I can assure you that they're made with the intent of being as safe as we can possibly be and keeping our kids in school for as long as we can possibly do so. And I know there's a lot of different opinions about whether it's going to work or not work. I get that. I get that. But it's not because -- I haven't made a single decision because I'm bowing to political pressure. There's been a ton of political pressure on both sides of the aisle, folks, both sides. So it's not about that. I can't make everybody happy if my life depended on it. So all I can do is make the decisions that I think are in the best interest of keeping our kids in school, and that's what we're doing. And I know that not everybody agrees with that. I get it. But understand, that is the baseline for the decisions that we are making.
Okay. With that finished, our next item is the public comment. So, Mr. Chernello, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Before we get started, I just want to say that I'd like to thank all the speakers for coming to speak at tonight's meeting. All speakers are asked to complete a public comment form and are reminded that they have three minutes as in allotted time to speak. As a matter of policy, all comments are directed to the presiding officer. If we can't answer your questions tonight, we have your contact information. You will hear from a representative of the district that is knowledgeable in your area of question, and the answers will be repeated at next month's meeting so it can be answered publicly. Before speaking, please state your name, your address, and your group affiliation, if it's appropriate. Mr. Chernello, who is our first speaker?
Dr. Beal, could I interrupt for just one second? I had one email that I think you'll find interesting that I'd like to share real briefly that I should have shared before. I got this on today at 1:32. It says, "Steve, I wanted to give you an update." This is from Transportation. "Steve, I wanted to give you an update as we are getting people with either close contact quarantine symptoms or confirmed with COVID. Last week, I had two confirmed cases, and this morning, we have four more that are added plus an aide. We are dangerously close to not being able to pick up or drop off students without a 30-plus-minute delay. We had multiple runs this morning, running 15 to 20 minutes late as we try and piece transportation together with healthy bodies we have, including using our office staff. Our dispatcher is also out with COVID. We've been trying to keep the community updated when we are running late via school messenger." So the additional issue that you might not be thinking about is obviously I got to have drivers to drive, and if we don't have drivers, that's a whole nother issue. And then, of course, as weather gets worse and worse and worse, leaving kids out at a bus stop for 20 or 30 minutes becomes more dangerous. So I just wanted to share that with you as well.
Mr. Chernello? Just as a reminder, I've had some people ask to be sure that you speak into the microphone so that everyone can hear.
Sure. Stacy Mensah, 35840 Hobby Drive, Eastlake. I would like to preface my comments by stating that I do not personally care what your vaccination status is. However, what I'm about to state is so wrong on many levels, no matter what your beliefs are. I have had several teachers and staff come to me with some disturbing information. Every teacher and staff member can see in Power School what a child's COVID vaccination status is. Not only can they see the status, it's in big blue letters next to their name. This information shows in the teacher dashboard and attendance screen. Do the parents in the district know that their child's information is out there for every single staff member to see? Do the parents consent to this? I reviewed the Google Docs form where you can send an image of your vaccination card, but nowhere on that form does it state that the vaccination status will be divulged to every single school staff member. All of you sit up here and preach about diversity and inclusion, yet this is another way to segregate the kids, just like the masks. It's another way for teachers to treat vaxxed and unvaxxed students differently. There are teachers that already do this to unmasked kids, and the same will happen to the unvaccinated kids. Don't try and tell me it isn't happening. I see it with my own eyes, and I engage with members of the community who have raised the same concerns. You might sit here and tell me it's so you know who you can quarantine, but this personal medical information should be handled confidentially by a select handful of administration personnel, not by every teacher. One last note. Please add back onto the COVID dashboard the last date that it was updated. For at least four days, the district was at 27 cases, then overnight went up to 47 and back down to 36, all within a 24-hour period. It's easier to see the trend in cases with a last updated date rather than making it look like you were dumping or deleting data all at one time. I urge you to be transparent on the updates made to the dashboard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chernello?
Laura Wolf. I live on Lake Shore Boulevard in Eastlake. I'm usually a little bit more prepared, but I feel like it doesn't really matter what we provide to you guys. I feel like it always falls on deaf ears, so I don't really even have notes. But I did, through some research, I believe that you guys gave the authority over to Steve last September with regards to making changes. So when we're talking about mask mandates and things of that nature, it's my understanding you guys didn't even need to make a board vote on that and that he imposes the power to do that without a board vote, which also means that, you know, we elect you guys. You guys are our voice. So if you guys give that power to one person, you take away your community's vote, and that goes for pro-mask, you know, anti-mask. It goes for anything if you guys give that power. And I understand in certain scenarios where that might be necessary, but that was back -- my understanding was September of 2020. So that's almost a year ago. When do you guys get that power? If that indeed happened in that September 14th meeting last year, if that is what happened, when does that power come back to the board? Is it indefinite? I mean, does he -- he makes the decisions, and it's all behind closed doors, and the public can't comment? We can comment, but it goes on deaf ears. So I'd like to know when you guys are going to get that power back if you indeed give it to him. And then, Mr. Thompson read the guidelines at the beginning of the meeting. I think the Lake County Department of Health provided new guidelines on Friday, and I think that's what you read. Is that what you read? Okay. So I think with those new guidelines, it's going to take quarantine downs, it sounds like significantly. So hopefully, that's what's going to happen. That's all that I had tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jim Clements. I live at 5458 Kellogg Court. I am a graduate of this school system. I'm sorry. No. I graduated from South High just a couple of years before most of you in the room here. And my -- I've had two adult sons who have gone through the school system here. They both have said Dad will never come in at a school board meeting because he can't say anything in three minutes or less. I came here to thank you for doing this mask mandate. I know this is unpopular. Nobody likes wearing these things. Passing AP Bio takes a lot of skill. Learning the plays in the football playbook for North or South High takes a lot of skill. Learning to play the trumpet if you're in fifth grade takes a tremendous amount of skill. Wearing this takes a tremendous amount of will. It's not a skill thing for me. It's a will thing. I try to remember it. I know that this works to prevent things, and I know we're all in a difficult fight with this. Nobody likes doing it, but I know it's necessary. It's necessary to keep kids safe. It's necessary to keep teachers safe. It's necessary to keep your bus driver safe and your cafeteria worker safe. We're all in a position now where we have to play defense. This is a very difficult virus. Yesterday, my grandson got a COVID test. He's five months old, everybody, five months. All we can do is work to try and prevent this, and if this helps, I'm all for what you're doing. Thanks for doing it.
Hi. Lori McCandless, Shelton Boulevard in Eastlake. Really quick. Everybody keeps throwing out dashboard numbers. I just looked. I just pulled it up on my phone, and it says there's four active cases, and that's as of September 1st. So is it glitched? Is something wrong?
The only thing I could guess you're looking at is maybe a specific building, maybe?
Nope. Four active district cases.
I don't know. I printed off this dashboard, printed off a few hours ago, so I'm not sure why it would do that. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And real quick, can you tell me again the COVID numbers for last year where you said, like, we're up so much more than we were last year?
We're at 150 cases now total, active, inactive, both active and inactive.
Okay.
So to hit that number, on December 3rd, we were at 148, and on December 9th, we were at 155.
Weren't we remote then?
We were.
So that makes a big difference, right?
It's probably made them lower than what they actually are because we were remote. If we weren't remote, they might have been higher, but yes.
Okay. So it's all about how you present stuff, okay? People are only hearing what you're telling them, and you're telling them -- you're using fear mongering. Bus drivers, they spend their job -- I'm assuming most of them are vaccinated and they're wearing masks. Yeah, they're all out with COVID. Are you -- can you clarify if there are two people that are possibly exposed to a COVID-positive student, one's vaccinated, one's not? Is the quarantining different? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay. Nobody has received the FDA-approved vaccine. It is not available. Any vaccine that anybody has received is an EUA vaccine, especially 12- to 15-year-olds. They're not even allowed to receive the FDA-approved. So HB244, which means you cannot discriminate between vaccinated and unvaccinated, should apply all the way around here to every kid. No child has received, what is it called? Comirnadi. That is the FDA-approved vaccine.
It won't be available for two years.
Right. Nobody. So HB244. And I know you, I know that's probably -- you really don't even know. Ron Graham didn't even know. He didn't even know what I was talking about. So that's something I would really suggest looking into because you cannot discriminate between vaccinated and unvaccinated. You cannot. I think that's basically all I wanted to say was I wanted to bring to attention the vaccine. Nobody's getting it. The deaths in children over the past 20 months is 338 from COVID. It's the same. Yeah. There's many more than that from the vaccine, but we won't even get into that. And yeah, I mean, I guess these are things. When will we get these answers? Like when the board gets the power back? When you're going to figure out between vaccinated and unvaccinated students and how that's handled?
Thank you.
Will that be before next board meeting?
What I would tell you is that when it comes to the vaccinated versus unvaccinated, we have consulted with the school district attorneys, and we're just following their recommendations. They have said so.
It doesn't make sense, though. And it needs to be looked into further because...
We can look into it.
Absolutely. It does not make sense. And then what about the power going back to the board members?
We actually had given Steve, Dr. Thompson, the ability to change the mask mandate in our August 5th meeting when we said that he could change things if the situation had progressed.
For how long, though?
And that, well, in August of this year. And at that point, we were at 50 cases per 100,000. We're now over 225 cases per 100,000. And that's when we got -- I can read the email from Ron Graham that we got that says, "Due to the rising number of COVID cases in the state of Ohio, your school district and the expected surge in the next few weeks, we recommend that students and staff wear masks."
Okay. We don't care to hear about expected surge. I mean, that's like telling you, like you're -- so again, August, August, when we were not in school, August when we were not in school. And I mean, you're comparing apples to oranges.
All I can tell you is that as a board member, I will listen to Ron Graham.
I'm speaking to him.
And the reason that I will listen to Ron Graham is because he is the top health department official in this county. I would not ask my son, he's a lawyer, he doesn't have expertise in this area. So we have taken his recommendations from August on, and when he changed his recommendation, that's when the policies were changed.
Okay. Then what about the recommendation he just put out? When does that go? Or when do you?
I believe that's what we've been doing since August, as far as the quarantining goes. Because his -- and...
That's not what the new recommendation that just came out says.
Sure. I was reading it last night with one of the parents.
It says that unless they are symptomatic, that they don't... What was that? I don't have it up there, of course. What did it say? Is that unless they're symptomatic, they don't...
We will look into it further. We will ask, we will call, we will call Ron Graham. So there's a member of the district that is in touch with Ron Graham on a daily basis, and we'll ask if that is a change. And if it is, we will change accordingly.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, that will end the public comment section, so...
Mr. Thompson, before she mentioned it was only at North High School, four cases.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of August 5th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes in the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Ari. Do I second? Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chernello?
Mr. Murhart?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mrs. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 4-0.
Next is the approval of the minutes of the meeting on August 9th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. President, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of August 9th.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. New Year, thank you. Do I hear a discussion? Hearing them, Mr. Chernello?
Mr. Murhart?
Yes.
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Mrs. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Abstain.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 4-0.
Next item on the agenda, item four, is the Treasures Report. Mr. Chernello?
I'd like to just point out on the chart on page one that you'll see our cash revenues and expenditures are in line with our estimates up until this point. Expenditures were low in July, however, that was due to timing, but they did catch up in August. They'll be in a holding pattern when it comes to items such as state revenue, open enrollment, community schools, and scholarships, as they will be adjusted in October due to the passage of House Bill 110. I also wanted to point out, we had strong collections for half of the real estate taxes. We collected 46.78% compared to last year. We had 43.18%. The benchmark is 48%. So typically, this collection is about 48%. The other collection's about 52%. So about what, 3.5% increase compared to last year? So that's a strong sign.
3.5% increase in collection rates? Is that what you said?
Yes. This year, we were 46.78%. Last year, 43.18%.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Letter B. Amended appropriations. This is primarily due to the American Rescue Plan funds and some adult education. The American Rescue Plan application was due and approved in August, so that was after our August board meeting, and that's why it's up for your approval today. 4C is the Gardner Water Treatment Service Agreement. This is just for our boiler systems. That's just to service them. 4D, purchase order and blanket certificates. These are due to timing, and this is also for, you can see the large blanket down below that is for bus fuel. So fuel for the school district. So that way, we don't have to get a purchase order in place every time we need to go get fuel for the buses. 4E, transfer of funds to the new fiscal year. This is to transfer the cash balance for Fund 467, Student Wellness and Success, and the 413, Post-Secondary Nursing Funds from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. 4F, this is to transfer from the Spear of Media. This is a defunct fund, and it was being transferred to... 4F, this is to transfer from the Spear Media. This is a defunct fund, and it was being transferred to the general fund, and then from the general fund is being divided between the north and high, north and south high school athletic programs. 4G, student activity program, purpose, goals, and budget purpose statements. These are a couple revisions that we received, some are budget-only and some are purpose and goals. 4H, gifts and donations. The first is from the public library. They donated 250 discontinued books to the district elementary school libraries and students. Number two is free kids lunch program, Willow Praise Church in Willow, Willowick and the Salvation Army in Painesville. They donated, book bags were donated with school supplies to the district elementary and middle school students. Three AL cabinets donated $250 to Edison, Grant, and Willoughby Middle for partial payment of a new Maker Gear 3D printer. Fred Astaire Dance Studio donated $700 to Edison, Grant, and Willoughby Middle for partial payment of a new Maker Gear 3D printer. DT Custom Cabinet donated $250 to Eastlake Middle and Willoughby for partial payment of a 3D printer. Swage Lock Foundation donated $500 to Grant for a partial payment of a new 3D printer. The North Music Booster Association donated $7,484 to Willowick Middle.
That's different.
For their vocal music department. Longfellow PTA donated $1,000 to the Longfellow Music Department. So thank, thank all those donors for their generous donations.
If I could interrupt just for a second, Nick. I've said it before, but I want to thank Gail Myers and Rachel Legursky, two teachers in our district who have gone way above and beyond to secure donations, which are partially illustrated here, but they were able to push out 3D printers across our district and put in our last Maker Space, which hadn't been there previously, which is going in right now at Willow, Willowby Middle School, and then all the schools will have them. So really sincerely, thank, thank you to those two ladies for taking this initiative on and really pushing it and championing it through. So if you happen to see or know those two teachers, Gail Myers or Rachel Legursky, if you could tell them thank you for really working hard for the students here, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Cernello. Item five is the superintendent resolutions.
Thank you, Dr. Beal. Item A for your consideration is the inter-district service area contract. This is the, the contract we do each year with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the school year.
This does, does require a separate vote, so do I hear a motion to approve item 5A, inter-district service area contract?
Mr. President, I move to approve item A, inter-district service area contract.
Thank you, Mrs. Newyer. Do you hear a second? Mr. Merhar?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Merhar. Do I hear any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Merhar?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Newyer?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Abstain.
Passes 4-0.
Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Dr. Beal. Item B for your consideration is the Willowby Eastlake Public Library Trustee Recommendation, probably one of the most confusing things we do. Why is it on a public school agenda? Because it's statutorily required to pass it through this way. So this is just standard practices that they run these items, and so with that, I make the recommendation to support that item.
Do we know the name of the-
Yes, the, it's Eric Folsell, F-O-L-S-E-L, Folsell.
Great. Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5B? Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, I motion to approve item 5B, Willowby Eastlake Public Library Trustee Recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do we hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Do I hear any discussion? Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Merhar?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Newyer?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Dr. Beal. Item C for your consideration is a WEADA, which is our Willowby Eastlake Teacher Association Memorandum of Agreement. This is as it relates to how we're handling students that are in quarantine so that we can either virtually teach to them or make sure that we're delivering the best instruction possible. And actually, the first piece of this is for, the second, that's the second piece. The first piece is for what we do each year for the president of the Teachers Association, which is Mr. McPhee, and then the reimbursement from the union for his time.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 5C, WEADA Memorandum of Agreement?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Newyer.
I move to approve item 5C, WEADA Memorandum of Agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. Newyer. Do you hear a second? Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Merhar?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Newyer?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Item 5, Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Dr. Beal. Item D for your consideration is the Second WEADA Memorandum of Understanding, which is the agreement with our teachers' union to make sure we're delivering the best instruction we can for quarantine students.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5D, WEADA Memorandum of Understanding?
Mr. President?
Mr. Roskus?
I will make a motion to approve item 5D, WEADA Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Roskus. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Merhar, thank you. Do I hear any discussion? Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Merhar?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Newyer?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Dr. Thompson?
Dr. Beal, item E for your consideration is the Administrative Exempt Employee Compensation Plan and Schedule of Benefits. It's been amended to include our plant supervisors when we made changes in our negotiated agreement. Those plant supervisors are subject to the same agreements, but they're outside of the union, so it takes a separate memorandum to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Do I hear a motion to approve item 5E, Administrative and Exempt Employee Compensation Plan and Schedule of Benefits? Thank you, Mrs. Newyer. Do you hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Merhar. Do I hear a discussion? Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Merhar?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Newyer?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Dr. Beal. Item F for your consideration is special service agreements. These are agreements that we typically have each year, and it is driven by the needs of a student on an IEP. So whenever possible, we want to deliver, obviously, the best instruction to all of our students that we possibly can, and there are times when outsourcing of those services is the best way to deliver that to students, and that, that's what these contracts represent. Item G for your consideration is the transportation bus stops, which you approve each year. So if you would like to ride some buses to check them out, you're more than welcome. And item H for your consideration is the personnel agenda. Mr. Merhar, I would-
You got it.
Okay, thank you. So everyone that appears on this agenda has been approved or will be approved or vetted, I should say, by the Bureau of Criminal Identification and Investigation, the Ohio Department of Education, the Federal Bureau of Investigation, prior to them being full-time employees or permanent employees.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Is there a motion to approve item 5H Personnel Agenda?
It's part of the-
Now, this one is not-
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Jones?
I motion to approve item 5H Personnel Agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do you hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Cernello?
Mr. Merhar?
Abstain.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Roskus?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.